Good evening and welcome to the Corte Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 14th. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bandell?
Here.
Commissioner Bishoyer?
Here.
Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Here.
And Chair Chase?
Here. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag in the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, equal rights and justice.
Thank you. So at this point in every meeting, we open it to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. Well, if you have something you would like to say that we're not going to talk about later, you can talk about it now for three minutes. So that's open. There's no one in the audience, I think, that's going to do that. Do we have anybody online?
No comments online.
All right. Thank you. So we'll close that open public comment. And we will head directly into our new hearing tonight. This is for the Village Mall. This is 1618 Redwood Highway, the Village at Corte Madera. It's titled as Public Hearing to Consider Design Review and Precise Plan Amendment Application, PL 24-0068, for landscaping improvements throughout the central pedestrian areas of the Village Shopping Center at 1618 Redwood Highway, including your planting areas, exterior lighting, seating areas, and modifications to the existing covered canopy. So we have plans in a packet, and Tracy, you are on those titles.
You. Chair Chase and Commissioners. As Peter said, this is a public hearing for landscaping improvements throughout the central pedestrian areas of the Village Shopping Center at 1618 Redwood Highway. The village is comprised of four large tenant buildings, Buildings A, B, C, and D, and three detached buildings that are east of the main buildings. It's Building E to the north, the Verizon Buildings, more towards Macy's, and then the Restoration Hardware Building off the east of the main buildings. Both the Nordstroms and the Macy's Buildings, north and south of the mall, are part of the mall complex but are under separate ownership. The village includes several common areas. The main ones are frequently called Center Court, which is the diamond-shaped seating and gathering area at the center of the mall, the East Plaza, which is located between the mall and the RH Building. And you have the north and south interior corridor, which is the common areas extending from Nordstroms at the north down to Macy's at the south. This corridor represents the extent of landscaping improvements proposed with this project, and the project area is shown illustrated in color on this slide. The Center Court and East Plaza were remodeled with new landscaping, hardscape and lighting in 2019 and 2020. Slide please. This slide is just showing some of the existing conditions in the project area. Apparently, the site consists of large areas of concrete and stone pavers. The applicant proposes to increase the landscaped area or the green coverage within the corridor from 2,530 square feet of landscaped area to 8,890 square feet of landscaped area. She shown on this slide are some illustrated site renderings, and these are on Sheets L0-08 and L all the way through to L0-10 of your plans. Here's some additional site renderings moving from north to south through the project site. Some more on this next slide. Next slide, please. In addition to horizontal green coverage, the proposed landscape plan will mound certain landscape areas up to two feet in height, in other words, creating these landscaped berms in certain areas, as shown on this site section on the slide here. The applicant also proposes to add landscape trellises at the existing columns of the canopy to provide some verticality in the landscape design. Again, this slide's showing a section through one of the proposed landscape berms, and the next slide is showing a section through one of the raised bed planters. These sections are on L701 and L702. Next slide, please. This slide is showing plant selection imagery. Planting plan is L800 to L808. Planting areas will consist primarily of a combination of shrubs, ground cover and grasses, accented by agaves and trees. A climbing vine, which is proposed to be honeysuckle, on a trellis, will be planted at the base of each column along the covered canopy. Four trees are going to be removed from the site, and 17 trees will be protected and retained. There are six 48-inch box trees that are proposed to be added. And the applicant's presentation is going to contain a little more information about their typical plant selection for these new plant seen areas. The mall includes four existing small water features dispersed throughout the corridor. An additional larger water fountain is located at Center Court, and these water features are proposed to remain. The site also contains many existing outdoor seating and gathering areas, which are also proposed to be retained. The applicant proposes to add more seating areas and new furniture throughout the project area to provide meaningful gathering spaces for visitors. The furniture locations are on L302 through L309. And what I'm showing on the screen is also on page L3-13, which includes images of the existing furniture as well as the proposed furniture. Slide please. The application includes a variety of exterior lighting, which will replace the existing lighting in the project area. The proposed exterior lighting includes new LED pole-mounted lights that's shown on the left edge of this slide. New bollard lights, that's the bottom right of this slide, are proposed to be distributed throughout the project site, lighting pedestrian walkways. New landscape lighting, that's the four light examples at the top of this slide, are going to be installed throughout the landscape planters. They consist of LED tree-mounted and ground-mounted directional accent lighting. The tree-mounted lighting will light down towards the landscaping beneath. And ground-mounted landscape lighting consists of recessed ingrade lights, that's the second light on the top there, there's a couple of those, as well as accent lighting mounted at the base of specimen trees. And additionally, there's accent lighting at the base of the columns along the covered canopy, as I mentioned previously. And then lastly, underneath the existing canopy, there'll be surface-mounted LED lights acting as accent lightings to highlight the remodeled canopy, which I'll discuss in a little bit. This next slide is I chose one of, one particular area of the project that includes many of the proposed lights. The yellow circle is representing accent lights at the base of columns. The purple square indicates proposed bollard lights. There's two at the left, orange circles representing the ingrade, ingrade recessed accent light. The green is the landscaping accent lights, and then the blue circles are the proposed pole lights. There's an X, which you can hardly see on here, but the black X represents demolition of an existing light. The, this slide's showing the existing covered canopy, which runs along the east side of, of the corridor. It's going to be remodeled. The existing wood canopy structure, the glue-lam beams, the roof rafters, and the sheeting will be sandblasted to remove the existing paint. All of the exposed wood will be sanded and then stained in a Bayer brand chocolate ST129. There are 20, about 21 existing columns, and the modification to those is to remove the 24-inch diameter concrete veneer wrap that's around each of the columns to expose the wood beneath, which will be replaced, and to sort of reduce the footprint of these columns. We can have the next slide. Please, thank you. The six-by-six support posts underneath that concrete veneer will be replaced with new six-by-six cedar posts. Those will remain exposed. They'll be stained also with that Bayer brand chocolate stain color to match the canopy. A metal planting trellis will be installed at the face of each of these columns to provide a way for those climbing vines, the honeysuckle, to ascend each of the columns. And as stated, as I say, I stated previously, accent lighting will be installed at the soffit underneath the canopy to accent the remodeled wood canopy. And Sheet A 2.0 shows the proposed canopy column color, and the renderings that I'm showing on this slider are on that sheet as well. Staff is recommending that all design review findings can be made for this project. There is an analysis of design review findings in the draft resolution, which is Attachment 1 to my staff report. And we're recommending approval of this application. I'm here to answer questions. There is also representatives from Mesa Ridge, which is the mall ownership and management team, as well as the landscape architect, who will have a presentation and answer questions as well.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start off with asking questions of you from the commission before we go into presentation. So Daniel, do you have any questions for, for Tracy?
Yeah. Can you say something about Public Works' review of the storm drainage and how the new storm drainage is related to what exists there now? And whether it's an improvement in terms of treating runoff and, and improving impervious, reducing impervious surfaces?
There are some storm drainage improvement sheets as part of the project plans. Public Works looked at those. They did have, they didn't have any correction type of comments or questions. They are requiring compliance with an erosion sediment control permit, and any project that creates or replaces up to 5,000 square feet of impervious surfacing includes different measures to handle stormwater, and they'll be looking at that closely at the permitting phase of the building permit. The applicant, in their project narrative, has stated that they're looking to improve upon their existing drainage. There are some improvements to stormwater runoff that's coming off the canopy. Those will be diverted to underground drainage system. So maybe the applicant will have them speak a little bit more to that. The stormwater improvements and drainage improvements are not subject to design review and obviously do require a building permit. So I haven't looked too closely at their drainage improvements, but they are part of the plan set, and Public Works has reviewed those and didn't have any comments that they needed addressing at this time.
Thank you. The other question I have is fire departments, if there were any comments about the bollard, security bollards being added, and, well, not just fire, but fire and police and access to the interior of the mall with those bollards?
Yes. I want to direct you to the draft resolution. It's Condition of Approval 19. And it reads that the security bollards, the removable bollards located within the mall should be secured via a breakaway lock, so they may be removed in case of emergency access is needed by emergency responders.
So as far as we know, the police and fire are okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. That's it for now. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Daniel. Valerie?
I had just the same question about the stormwater runoff and specifically about the two-feet elevation hills, if you will, or bumps. Just whether or not there was a study, if it's going to cause any soil erosion, if there is no proper stormwater management there? Or improvements thereof?
They'll need to appropriately convey that stormwater in accord with Public Works' requirements, and they will look closely at that. It's not anticipated that a landscape berm would affect that or cause any erosion of the landscape burn, berm, and that would, that would certainly be a maintenance of, of those areas. But it's, it's not anticipated that that, that would have any negative effect on, on stormwater, the presence of any berms.
Thank you. There's a section through there, and we can talk to landscape architect about it, but if I, you had one up on screen that almost appears that everything's on slab there. I'm not sure, but these guys can answer that. That would just mean that it's a pile of dirt on slab, and the drainage is what it was before. It will be the same afterwards, in a way, so to speak, but we'll let them answer that.
There's more green area. So drainage is going to change.
Because the soil has to be drained, and they have a drainage plan in there.
Okay.
Okay, Margaret?
I don't have any questions of Tracy.
Jim?
I have a question. Were there any comments from any of the tenants that were notified regarding circulation or anything?
No, although if the mall may have had separate conversations with some other tenants related to these improvements, I believe they can make notes.
But they were notified, right? So if someone was concerned about it, they would have reached out to you guys, or would they dealt with them all?
Correct. They were, they were notified and in accord with our public notice procedures.
Okay. And I was wondering about the directories. There's just a little bit of information in there. Are these digital directories?
They're, they're digital directories where one can touch the they'll be upgraded, so where one can, can touch the directory to, to interact with it. I think the applicant has a better understanding than me of exactly how that technology works, and they can speak to that.
Okay. And is the advertising going to be facing the we know which way the advertising is going to be facing, and if it's lit up and turned off at a certain time, or?
Signs should be turned off at 11:00 PM. I don't think they're open past nine o'clock or so, and I don't see the need for a directory to be on, but they can speak if those are on timers. We would require them to have a tenant, a sign on it, advertising a sale, for instance, that the sign is off.
Oh, I can ask them. Okay, thanks.
Great. I have no questions. So, okay, Daniel, yes?
With the closing of Macy's and the prospect that that site might get redeveloped, were the discussions about postponing improvements adjacent to that site because of potential future construction, and also there may be something in the redevelopment of that site that would influence what you'd want to do on that part of the plaza? For example, if there were a restaurant on that ground floor facing the mall, you might want to treat that very differently than currently planned. So I don't, this may be a question for the proponent, but I just wonder if that came up in your discussions with them?
I made it a little bit. They did take into account that that site probably would be redeveloped and did not extend any of these landscaping improvements over that property line. There was an approval in 2019 for Mesa Ridge to install some landscaping at the Macy's site similar to what's been done, what they did at Nordstrom and at the East Parking Lot, and that they didn't move forward at that time because of the uncertainty with the Macy's site. So I think there'll be a lot of talk between Mesa Ridge and members redeveloping that site about kind of what that interface looks like, and I'll let the applicant speak to how much they put, thought they put into the design of sort of the landscaping that's adjacent to that site, but I do know that it doesn't extend over the property line. It's confined to the Mesa Ridge side of that property.
Would, would something in the condition of approval be relevant to making sure that there's an opportunity to address changes there in the future?
Anything that would happen on the Macy's site, it's actually a separate property. They would have to come through a process, they're similar process with us. And again, if they, our applicant tonight were to change anything, it would just be an amendment to what, what would be approved hopefully tonight.
I didn't think that answered my question, but we can come back to that.
Okay.
Thanks.
If I might direct your attention to the memo that there shows the property lines?
Yeah.
And so their development doesn't go beyond the property line. So that's where it stops. This development they're proposing. So, and there's nothing about the Macy's site before us tonight at all? Or would there have been? Regardless of this?
Well, there's nothing specific in front of us, but we have had discussions about proposals and discussions between Macy's and the potential developer and staff. So it's not just, I'm not making this up.
No, I'm not saying you are. I'm saying that's not a part of this at all tonight, so. Or would it be?
I think nothing's defined at this time. We don't have a proposal for the Macy's site, so it's just speculative right now.
Well, maybe the proponent can address this.
Okay. So, gentlemen, who's going to speak to all of this up here? Who's going to start the ball rolling?
Okay, town commissioners and staff, thank you so much for having us here. My name is John Steckley. I am the Development Lead for Mesa Ridge for the village. Alongside me tonight is Louis Grace, who is, is our design lead on this project. Armando Silva, who is with Design Workshop, our landscape designer, and then Stan Hoffman, who is the general manager of the village. We are very excited to be here again. This is, I think, my third or fourth opportunity to speak in front of Planning Commission about our reimagining and reinvesting at this, at the village. Now, this, the, the latest iteration of investment at the center really kicked off with, with what we did at Center Court and with RH. Substantial improvements to the, to the customer experience at the center. If you pay any attention to, you know, the financial success of the center, which I'm sure you do, that's really kicked, kicked us into high gear with being able to capture a lot more new customers and tenants, and frankly, create an experience at our center that, you know, really doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to shop. You're going to enjoy the center. And why I said experiences, you know, why, why I'm kind of highlighting experience is that that's really what we're trying to do here with these common area improvements. Retail is now experiential. You know, I know everyone here probably shops online. And, you know, people come to our centers and specifically to the village to, you know, to, to enjoy everything that Marin has to offer, what Corte Madera has to offer. And frankly, we have fallen short of providing that environment over the past, I want to say, past 10 years, 10, 15 years since we made last, our, our last substantial investments in the center in the common area. So what we're trying to do here is we're trying to really bring that experience forward. We feel that we've come up with a design that is authentic to Marin, authentic to Corte Madera. We have incorporated a plant palette that we have started with the improvements, landscape improvements to the, the main mall parking lot, and then also the Center Court and East Entry Areas, and we're continuing that palette throughout the center. And as you can see on the plans, there's a lot more places for our customers to sit and dwell and really enjoy, you know, again, the great weather and the environment that they have here in Marin. Another key component, and I think this was mentioned earlier in the, in the questions from the commissioners, we've shared this with tenants. The tenants are very excited about what we're proposing. This is a substantial investment for us, and, you know, that's a signal to them, signal to, to them as they're going throughout the market, looking in the broader Bay Area to, you know, to potentially open their first store or create, you know, put their second store in. It's really important for them to see that investment. So we've had some, some really good feedback from them. We are also very aware of what is occurring at the Macy's parcel. Like you, we are very interested in seeing what the final plans are there. That being said, we work closely with, with staff over the past few years as you develop your housing element to understand that the future of that site is probably not going to be a large format anchor box. And, you know, we are not going to be developing it. It will be Macy's and/or a partner of Macy's. But given the fact that we know that that will probably be some retail component, some experiential component, we have left that corner of the common area plan as receptive as it can be at this stage to whatever might come of the, of the Macy's plan. So again, as Commissioner Chase said, this is really focused on the interior of the center. And when the Macy's project does come forward, we will definitely be looking at probably some tweaks to that end of the center and really pushing the applicant at the Macy's parcel to be, you know, to, to be creating an environment that's, you know, that's commensurate with what we're, we're proposing today. So with that, I will pass it off to Armando, and we're more than happy to answer any questions again. You know, I think there's some questions regarding Macy's, which we can't answer frankly today, and we're not in a position to do that. But we'll try to ask and answer any of your questions to the best of our abilities.
Thank you. All right.
We'll pull up your presentation shortly.
Okay. And I think a lot has been discussed regarding this presentation already, from what we've seen. So I'm going to be skipping through a lot of things. Feel free to jump in with any questions. I know you had some specific questions for the landscape architect, so feel free.
Lost in space. We, um, you may have to ad lib here.
And, and I think that's fine, honestly, because I think what you've saw from the presentation that Tracy showed, it, it included a lot of the images, a lot of the slides that I was going to be going over. Just to paint a broad picture, the, the intent here is to really enhance the village. It has kind of fallen in time, and I think we need to bring it back up to, you know, current standards. We wanted to really create a special comfort or a spatial comfort to the place. Right now, it's just a sea of, you know, concrete pavers. And so what we're actually doing is we're providing, I think, about a 250% increase in planting, increasing the permeability on the site, which is going to enhance the drainage as well. Bring in a lot of drought tolerant plant pellet that feeds off of the center courtyard, the RH design as well. So we're not completely detaching, you know, the north and south corridor from the previous designs. We're just further enhancing that. We want to bring a human scale to the site. I mean, that's something that's missing right now. So in terms of verticality, we're planting trellises, we're breaking up some of these concrete pavers to, you know, further, further plant on the verticality as well as a horizontal plane. We talked briefly about the mounds, so that was one item that, you know, we're trying to get a little bit more height. I believe about 24 inches, 18 to 24 inches in height on those. In terms of drainage on those, we're working closely with our civil that is going to be incorporating perimeter drainage around that. The type of plants that we're selecting, it's whether it's a ground cover or a native grass or drought tolerant grass, it's going to help on erosion. So we don't really have to worry about that. I see the presentations up now, but honestly, I mean, if we, if we just want to go to like maybe some of the renderings, and we can yeah, there's a lot of process diagrams. It's something that we typically go through in a design workshop. Right, yeah. We looked at sightlines, I mean, understanding, you know, that this is a retail area that, you know, we don't want to put a giant tree in front of some tenant space. So you could start to see a lot of the plant material, how that enhances the space, bringing in color to the site. Next slide, please. And so on the north side, the Nordstroms area, right now, it's basically one found, one planting area. We're going to bring in some more just to soften up the space, create, like I said, spatial comfort for the user, more places to sit, to kind of have that intimacy as in, you know, kind of with landscapes surrounding them. Here you can start to see the introduction of the trellises, working up the columns. So we're removing the current wrap. Those will be all exposed beams, which will allow for more visibility under the column. Or under the canopy, I should say. Next slide. So yeah, I mean, you, you saw a lot of these slides. We're surgically going in here to remove X amount of hard scape and bring in soft scape. And just further expanding on the furniture that's currently on site. We feel that it works really well, the manufacturer. For the furniture, we're bringing in more as well as, I believe, yeah, Adirandac chairs, cafe cell chairs, kind of family dining cell tables. Umbrellas is one thing that we noticed was lacking on the site, and so we really want to include that just for the comfort of the user. Yeah. If you have any specific questions regarding the landscape, please chime in.
Okay, we'll start that when you feel you're ready for that, so.
Yeah, I think this, this is a good point. I mean, a lot of, it's a lot of the same slides you've, you've seen.
Okay. Before I go to the other commissioners, I just want to point out a couple of things that you've got several pages dedicated to drainage in here. Per Commissioner Kenny's question, that's something that's going to be further developed during the permit stage, but you've got the consultant on board now for that.
Correct.
I was mistaken. It looks like it is over natural grade. It is not on slab on the.
It's over natural grade, correct? Yeah.
I'm just going to point out that there is a mockup of the posts in the center now. I don't know if you guys saw the, the new six by sixes there. You had two mockups. Looks like you've selected one of those two.
Correct. We selected the six by six, two six by six posts with a gap in between the posts.
Okay. And then I noticed that in considering the furniture there, there's a wide disparate furniture style right now. And it's dispersed, interspersed throughout the mall, and it looks like it's really well used. So with this change to furniture, you're saying it's a net add of furniture, not a reduction of furniture.
Correct, net add. Yeah, definitely. So yeah, further expanding on some of the tables that are currently on the site, they're pretty resilient. So we just want to bring in more of those as well as the Adirandac chairs. Those are really popular. We're going to be bringing in more of that Adirandac chairs as well.
Okay. I will then be quiet and turn it over to the commissioners to ask you questions. Mr. Kenny, questions for this gentleman?
Yeah, thank you. You're removing, I think, four trees. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. That's at the northeast entry that we're removing those four current Paris Paris trees, I believe. Yes, that's correct.
Why are they being removed? And I don't know those trees. How big are they?
Those trees are, they are not functioning well right now, how they're, they sit on the site. It's kind of, it's one of the main entry points to the site. It has the ability to kind of introduce a statement piece to that corner. So what we're doing is we're removing those. We're coming in with a new planting area that is going to remove X amount of concrete from that. Replant that. That's going to be better for drainage, more permeability as well. And then we're coming in with an olive tree that works well. So the thing with our site is that there's a high water table. And so those trees aren't functioning properly right now. They're being affected. So what we've noticed with RH design is that the olive trees are actually thriving. So that's what we wanted to do there.
Okay, thank you. So I guess it's kind of somewhat in a way related question. I'm interested in the berm planting areas. And when you look at your section L seven dash O one with the grasses, it's basically cutting off some sightlines. If you draw a line from the adult here over to this young person on the other side, you can't see that person because of the grasses. So have you taken that into account? Would you use different materials to maintain sightlines than the grasses on those higher mounds?
Right. So right here on the bottom left, the African Daisy, I believe that's a ground, that is a ground cover that reaches about, I want to say, six to 12 inches in height. So that's something that as we finalize our design, that we're looking closely into and looking at the different heights of the plant material and whether we're actually going with a 12 to 18 inch tall grass or more of a ground cover that's six inches to 12 inches.
Okay. Then lighting. Compliments you in doing so much of the lighting being downlighting and indirect, but there's a few of the uplights to the, in the landscape areas. And I think on the columns, so could you, I mean, I'm, I'm just concerned about, you know, dark sky considerations, you know? So could you just say something about the level of that light and anything about?
Right.
It's a potential impact?
As of right now, we're abiding by all the dark sky requirements. Our lighting designer is fully aware of all that. So we're meeting the one foot candle requirement that is required by code. But in terms of enhancing landscape, we either have shields on the lights that will not, you know, prevent any light pollution. To that, to that extent that, you know, it's being taken care of to avoid any dark sky issues.
I just want to say that, you know, I really think what you're doing is really great in general. I mean, it's these upgrades, you know, making those investments and, and, and I think the added green space and the improvements to the canopy and the columns will make a big difference. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. All right, Valerie.
Thank you for presenting this. I think the improvements are really great. My kids love that mall. They are upset about the playground gone though. But I do have a just quick few questions on the material specifically. Is it a natural wood that is prone to weathering or is it a composite that is easier to maintain?
It's a natural wood.
So is there a management?
There's going to be stains to prevent any water corrosion or, you know, rot. Yeah.
And would you say it's like once in three years for the maintenance or just?
I would, I would say, yeah. Yeah. And it's going to be built into the maintenance program to, to do those. And yeah, if it's, you know, if we want to do it once every year, which I, I would say that, you know, most likely that's what would be the case, even though it would, you know, per manufacturer standards, it might be like once every three years, I think we would probably approach it.
Yeah, I'm just concerned how invasive it could get with so much canopies and wooden posts. You know, having like a yearly maintenance that could get like in the way of community in a way. But, okay, we can, we can talk about it later. And then the other question, more so request, can we change the E3 to the model that has the power outlets and place them strategically where the seating is, since we're talking about the bringing human side to the?
That's a great question. We're, we're currently working through all that, and we're providing outlets for all the spaces so that the user could have.
That would be amazing. That's a large piece that is missing there right now because people are, I'm noticing people are going to lunch there and they're sitting with their laptops. And it's only lasted 30 minutes, so.
Fully aware of that, yes.
That would be great.
Do that.
Right. Thank you. That's all for me.
Opportunity for revenue. Just kidding. All right. Margaret, do you have any questions?
I've noticed in the pictures that have been provided, there isn't, it doesn't, it seems like you're getting rid of the kiosks that are there. There's the hot dog stand and there's one that sells cellphone equipment outside of the Apple Store. Is that going to?
John could cover that.
Be replaced by plants?
No, so, so we are definitely keeping stangs. We're, you know, they're probably the most authentically local tenant that we have. So nothing's going to change regarding stangs. But your comment about the, the kiosk, the cellphone, we're getting, we're getting rid of that. You know, I think, I, I think the, the comment there is, and this, this ties into the question earlier about the digital directories. We're taking, we're trying to declutter the center. You know, frankly, our competition is Marin Country Mart and Town Center, which have very clean presentations. And I think, you know, just generally speaking, people like to be in environments where they're not getting, you know, hounded by cellphone, you know, case salesman and, and ads. So we're trying to consolidate. One, we're trying to get rid of any of that clutter, so we won't have any kiosks at the center going forward. And then to, to the extent there's any business development or advertising, that's all going to be put into those digital directories. So those digital directories will function both as, as again, advertisements specific to, you know, our business needs at the center and then also interactive wayfinding. So, you know, you're not going to be in a situation at the center where you can't find your way around, which I think frankly, today, even though it's a small center, it's still not a great wayfinding experience. And that's, you know, we've, we've done this nationally and it's worked really well, and it's a very tasteful solution.
And maybe you can also answer, what about the fire pits? There's a fire pit there or there was. I remember asking about it last time because I thought it was hazardous.
We have one at Center Court, which was, we put in, in 2020.
Right.
And it has protective glass around it.
Is that going to remain?
That will remain, yeah. That's a new. But we are keeping all of the, this is part of our feedback from our, our tenants and, or not our tenants, but our customers. You know, there's a lot of people who feel very passionately about the water features at the center. Coming to the center with your, your children and, you know, they're at children level. So we're keeping those, those features, you know, we've got, I think there's frogs and ducks, and so that's all going to be improved. And, you know, just incorporated into the plan. So.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is that all for you at the moment, Margaret?
Is there going to be? Well, I've noticed recently a lot of dogs, people with dogs there. So is there going to be any accommodation for curbing the dogs? How nice it is to say it, but what are you going to do with the dog poop?
That's a great question.
I'll pack it in, pack it out.
I mean, the, the current system seems to be working really well. And most, we, we ask that people have their dogs under control. And our guests have been very cooperative, so I don't anticipate these changes necessitating any changes to our current policy. And that is, if the dogs will behave, they're, they're welcome. But it's, it's currently not a problem.
Okay. Those were my questions.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. All right, then on to you, Mr. Rizel.
Thank you. So I noticed a lot of the mounds or landscape areas are at the columns. Is that to filter some of the water from the runoff from, from the roof? Because I believe that there's.
Right. Yes.
Rainwater leaders at those, at some of them.
There's two reasons. I mean, one is a spot on that, you know, provide more permeability gutters that are going to be draining into those areas. And as well to provide planting areas for the new vines to grow up the columns. Yeah.
So it's got a dual purpose. That's great. And are any of the mounds, I, you know, I a hard time reading the, the small text, but I, I didn't seem like there were too many areas that were really kind of created more for a rain garden for kind of service runoff. They were more
Right, yeah.
Kind of built up. Are, are there any that are kind of depressed a little bit to capture some of the runoff from the concrete?
As of right now, no. It's either an at grade planter, which is usually set about three inches, the finished grade, so the adjacent or concrete or concrete paver. Other than that, it would be the mounted version.
Okay. And I know it, I know that the, some of the design measures will be, will be applied to the building permit, but you guys, could you just let us know which ones that they, that you guys are considering as applying to this, to this permit? Some of the watersite design measures that are required for the HPTES Phase Two General Permit? There's some measures that are required, or do you guys know which ones that you might be applying?
As of right now, from my understanding, there's not any that we're necessarily meeting to a five, right? We're not meeting the 5,000 disturbance that would trigger stormwater requirements.
I'll see you right below it. Okay. How about the whiffs? And there's a lot of, a lot of planting area. I'm sure there was a study done of flow, but are there any concerns with egress exiting from the mall? It seems like there's not a lot of, we're, we're actually now kind of hurting people in a, in a certain area. Is there any concerns with exiting during a fire situation or something like that?
That's a great question. That's something that we really studied. Actually, we have some slides earlier, the site analysis where we studied the pedestrian circulation through the site. Yes, well, this is kind of the composite of, you know, studying vehicular circulation through the site, pedestrian circulation, seating groups. So all that, we really took into account to create corridors that are no less than eight to 10 feet to allow, and that's typically the comfort level, level for people to walk through a site. I mean, the site is really expansive right now that it's just really open. So, you know, these berms, these planting areas are not really going to affect the circulation site, but kind of the, the layout that you see for the planting design is based off of, you know, your primary and secondary circulation, whether you're walking all the way from the north to the south, or you're walking east to west across from store to store.
Okay. And this is a tough one. Did you, did any of the tenants come back with any concerns or negativity, negativity towards the project? I'm just, I know that there's been a lot of positive input. Was there any concerns about loss of circulation or visibility to their?
Yeah, visibility is always something that we have to address with tenants. You know, I, I think, I think again, on balance, the, the feedback was resoundingly positive. Like I said earlier, I think, you know, the great thing about our tenants is that they, they gravitate to frankly, higher end centers in areas with really strong demographics. And they see a lot of value in having, you know, having the center setting around them feel, you know, more of a residential hospitality type feel versus, you know, I think frankly, how it feels today, which is a very sterile regional shopping center. So that's been the feedback. And, and look, I think, you know, there's comments about the, the size of the planting and the berms. The first person that will, person, well, the first person that will tell us that it's too high would be our tenants. And we'll just have to address that. But, you know, again, I think underscore my point, there's the, the tenants that we work with really see value in experience. And they're excited. And, and I think the other thing too, that, that really I think worst bears mentioning right now, and I know it's not a PM center, traveled center. Although, you know, for us, our business really does a lot of business in the darker months, you know, November, of course, November and December. We really have an underwhelming lighting plan at the center right now. It's kind of bare bones. And they've been particularly excited about the underlighting that we're going to be doing under the canopy. Because that's where they have their, their tenant blade signs that has obviously their tenant signage. So, you know, I think you're just going to get a much more comprehensive cohesive experience. And that's what we've been telling our tenants. And we'll let you know if we hear anything negative, but so far, so good.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know who to address this. I, I just, I'm going to come back to the directories. Could someone tell us a little bit more about the directories and how they're visible from the parking lot?
Yeah, so, so they're, they're like human scale. I think they're about, I'm six feet tall, so I think they're six, seven feet tall, three or four feet wide. I think Tracy has the exact dimensions. Now, we're looking at, I think it's six, Louis? Six of them total. And we've put them in positions where, one, they're not going to interfere. Um, and we've put them in positions where one, they're not going to interfere with egress and ingress. Um, you know, not interfere with ADA accessibility. Um, and, and two, the only one that's going to be, I think the only one that's going to be visible from the parking lot is going to be the one that's at the RH East Entry Court, right? Or maybe, maybe you can speak to this better than me.
Yeah, there's currently.
Go ahead, Lewis.
Um, so there's two existing. Um, one is by East Court at the kind of pinpoint of that court by RH. Um, that one, we're just swapping out, we're just upgrading it. Um, and then there's one by Cheesecake, which we're relocating. Those would be the only two that you'd be able to see from outside of the common area. Um, and that one on Cheesecake, we're actually moving farther in, getting it away from parking.
Um, specifically on the, on the advertising, is it, is it like an advertisement that's just going to stay, it's, it's going to be constantly moving or is it?
It's, it's constant. Well, I mean, it depends on the advertisers. Um, but yes, I would assume that it's over a period of time, it's constantly moving. But we have placed them in a direction, right? Our BD department runs that and they've placed them in a way and they're rotated. As you can see, when you go through the center, they're all rotated in a way to not affect tenants storefronts. So they're not looking at a TV in front of them. They're usually at an angle, they're twisted to a side. And then they're all going to be directories too, where you touch them and then you can find out. I mean, the first time I went to the center, it was like, who's here? How do I know that? I have to walk it. Well, now you can go to, well, we know where Nordstrom is, but right, you'd be able to find that key tenant and have that understanding of where they are. And it moves just like you've seen in Westfield malls, right? You can scroll in and out, you know, where's the restrooms and it gives you the path. Um, we've moved that direction on most of our centers. Um, they, they are well received. And they're very helpful.
I'm going to bring that up Chair Chase, because we never really reviewed the advertising on the charging stations, because they just kind of showed up one day.
Yeah, that's right. That was out of the blue. Suddenly they were there.
Well, glad to have the charging.
There's another point of that too, like they bring up. And when we walked the center with BD a number of years ago, when we were just starting this process, um, there, I think Karma was the big developer at, Arna was, and there were just banners and there were posts and, and it was just clutter. Um, so that's when we really went back to the office and got everybody in the room. It's like, how can we handle this to clean up that clutter and not affect what we're trying to do? Right? It not, it's not a banner that can move anywhere and everything. We control the location, we control the sightlines and we control really how you would see it, right? The occupants. So that was the intent.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. One of our, uh, respected citizens, uh, the Bike and Ped Committee has asked about bike racks. You may have seen the memo from him. And, um, it is true, you know, to park your bike on the perimeter and then walk in is just an anathema to a cyclist, right? They want to walk in with their bike and lock it up somewhere inside the mall where they're going. So is that a consideration? Is that a possibility? Can you address that in some way?
Great question. I, I love biking. Possibly chime in on that bike situation. I, I think, um, you know, it's, it's a comment that we saw today. We'll take a look at it. I, I think one of the issues is, um, you know, frankly, we're trying to keep bikes out of the, the center of the, uh, of the center. So we're kind of at loggerheads there. Um, but we're definitely going to look at it. I mean, I, you know, I think most people who are cyclists don't want to park their bikes on the exterior of the center. I understand that even though we have great security and, you know, we're staffed. Um, but that's something that we'll look at, uh, bike storage. I think frankly, for, from our perspective, what we'd like to do, one of the things that I didn't mention about this plan is we're really trying to also attract, uh, food and beverage tenants to the center. And that's an opportunity that we see, foresee in the future, possibly with the, the Macy's redevelopment. Um, and if you guys ever go to a coffee place on a Saturday or Sunday morning, um, especially here, um, it's usually mobbed with, with cyclists. Um, so I'm, I'm telling you that because I think depending on, uh, the new deals that we do at the center, if we do more food and beverage tenants, if we get a great coffee tenant, if we steal fills from across the way at Town Center, um, we'll probably, it'll probably warrant, uh, uh, you know, just because it's something that our customer needs. Um, a more kind of permanent solution to the bike storage issue. So it's something that we're going to look at and, you know, hopefully we can come up with a solution.
Good. That's important. I think that people want to hear that you're receptive to that type of transportation being sort of encouraged and brought in. And this is a completely random question out of the blue. Are you aware of the Caltrans improvements at the overpass and so forth?
We are, and we'd like them to be completed as soon as possible because we've liked what we've seen so far. We, we would, you know, again, one of the comments is we want to encourage more dwell time at our center. We want more daily visitors to our center that aren't just coming to, you know, frankly, just shop. Um, you know, we want someone to come and work on their laptop. And, you know, if, if it, if it, you know, if those improvements bring more pedestrians and more cyclists across, uh, Highway 101 to our center, we are all in favor of that. So, um, we'd like, we'd like for Caltrans to, to expedite that.
We would hope that here in the community, that companies such as Macy's, which can stand for something and be public about their support of that. And, uh, tell, tell Caltrans this is important.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's, that's a big deal.
It's definitely something we've talked about in the past. I know it's been on our radar for at least half a decade now. So.
Yeah. Okay, that's great. Um, any other questions from the Commissioners Chair? All right, so, um.
They've got an office, they've got an office above them, but.
I knew they never should have gotten rid of the food court. Now it's back. I'm kidding. Um, so, um, Dan, if you guys are through with your presentation, then we'll open it up to the public comment. And see who's online, if there is anybody at this moment to contribute. Okay. Thank you. We may have you back up there yet. So.
Okay. Thank you.
No comments online. We do have two written public comments that were received and are located at the back of the room, on the dais and on our website.
Okay, nobody's chiming in. Nobody's raising a hand here.
No raised hands at the moment.
Okay, well, we'll go get somebody. That said, um, the two comments, one was David McPherson. Who else is there? Well, Bob Bundy wrote one in. Are those the two you're referring to? Yeah. Okay. David McPherson, uh, wrote about the bike racks and, um, provided an example and, uh, Bob Bundy, uh, reported the development that you proposed. So. There you have it. Okay. So at this point, we're going to close public comment section. I'm sorry.
The room.
I don't know that they, I asked them if they were going to comment tonight and they said no. So, um, thank you for checking in, right? You know, they have their opportunity, um, but I, I don't know that they will. So, all right. So then we have that closed and then it's up to us to talk about this here. So, um, we've had a good presentation and now it's up to you guys to delineate what you've got for thoughts. I'll stick with the process here and start with Mr. Kenny over there.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think they've done a nice job of, of answering questions. And, uh, you know, I'm satisfied that they've addressed, um, my concerns. And, uh, as I said before, I, I think their proposal is, uh, is a good improvement to, to the center. And, um, and, uh, and I, I support this approving this as is.
Okay, great. Thank you. Valerie?
Same here. I really admire all of the efforts that are going into improving the landscaping, uh, at the center. My only small concern is about the weathering of the material and maintenance of it, like how invasive that would be to the public. But perhaps Town Center has a plan for it. But other than that, I don't have any concerns and I support the resolution too.
That's great. Okay. Ms. Margaret?
I have lots of comments. Um, but, but first I want to say any amount of, um, new planting is wonderful. I approve of green entirely. Um, the big design issue I have is this, the color of the paint, this, the brown color, which I think is fine. But I'm wondering how that coordinates with the blue when, when a couple of years ago, they painted, um, the blue and it, it was explained to me because I didn't like that color, that this would invite people into, from the parking lot into the mall. And, um, I don't know how that deep blue color coordinates with this brown color that you're now going to introduce into the, um, canopies. And so I'm wondering about that as a design consideration in such a small mall. I think that, that the colors ought to coordinate in some way, and I don't think that does. And the other thing I think, uh, Valerie brought up is that if you want to make this experiential, you've got to put more space in for children. Um, children are there constantly with their parents, mothers go into shop. I see this all the time. I just about live in the mall. Mothers are in shopping and fathers have little children that are, they're chasing around and around. And there's no real constructive place for children to be. And I understand that although it was well used, you had to take out the little park that was there for health reasons, wasn't that, as I understood it, that's why. Um, but, but you, you need to put in more of a place where children might, I don't know, crawl, enjoy themselves, do, do something. And along that line and making it experiential, I, I think something like giving one small area or small space for public services. For instance, like a library kiosk. There's no library or bookstore on this side of the freeway. And if there was a small kiosk where maybe once a week, there could be a story hour or they could have a children's something, a Marionette show or, or something that made, you know, people come there with their children and there would be something for the kids to do. Um, that's one idea I had. Uh, I'm going to put in my two cents about the bikes having nearly been run over in the other shopping center by electric, by an electric bike. And it was so close to me that it just about took off my ear. My kids running around and by putting the bike racks inside the center, it just encourages kids or adults to ride their bikes through the center. And I think that's dangerous, uh, for pedestrians. Um, I don't know if there's any reason to talk about the hours of lighting or if it's just going to follow along with.
Yeah, it follows.
The rest of, yeah. Um, oh yeah. And then one other thing, in, in the town of Corder Madera, we've talked a lot about parklets and outside of restaurants are parklets. I know there's an outdoor seating area outside of, um, Cheesecake Factory. And Boca, but that's on, in the parking lot side, yeah. But, um, I think, um, you refer to it as clutter, but it does feel homey to see people sitting and enjoying themselves. And, you know, maybe Pete's could be encouraged to have a parklet. And they have some tables there, but it's not really defined. It's kind of all over the place. And, um, on the other end of the mall, there's really nothing, um, to encourage people to kind of sit and enjoy. And so I would say make some space for people to just be encouraged to come there. Don't clean it up so much. They're not encouraged to come.
Okay. Well, you've made some, uh, comments that maybe they can address a little bit there. And, um, I think we'll do that. I appreciate your thoughts on that. Let Jim express himself and then we'll get you guys back up to answer some of this or talk to some of it, right?
I think all the Commissioners made some great points. And reinventing retail is something that's happening right now. And, and, and the property owners need to, need to figure this out. Um, and I appreciate that, you know, coming up with this concept of experience and taking them through a journey. But I, I'll also agree with Margaret a little bit, like maybe there, maybe you're not finished, finished with the design. There could be some spaces that were, uh, reimagined a little bit. You're creating a lot of different, uh, spaces that just have seating now. Maybe they do have a sculpture that the kids climb on. I've seen that a lot. Um, it could, could be something. So maybe integrating some more experiences throughout the, the journey through this landscaping, new landscaping. And then, um, I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing some of these raised planters to be just, just to change it up a little bit in elevation to be actually, uh, you know, kind of capture this, the, the runoff as well as just having a different kind of verticality, um, than just having mounds everywhere. But I understand that this may affect the way that the plants grow. I don't know, but it'd be great if you guys could continue studying that. I, I do have a little bit of concerns with, with, with how many, uh, raised planting areas there are and, and how directed the people are. It's going to be hard to get back and forth to some of these stores. Some of the planting areas are right in front of people's front doors. But I just have a little bit of concern about flow. And, um, that's why I was asking so much about the tenants, just to see if they had a concern about why I used to design storefronts. We didn't want anything in front of that store because we wanted to make sure people could get in and across the mall. So, um, I'm sure you would have heard those concerns if it was a concern, but, um, it seems to me that there might be a bit too many. That's just my opinion. Definitely in the right direction and it looks great. And I love that it's going to be filtering some of the water. Those are my comments. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you. Um, uh, before we ask you to stand up and respond to a couple of comments here, I'm just going to say I am in, uh, great support of this, uh, revision to it. I think a couple of things you've done are very important. One is, uh, taking away the large columns. There's sort of a visual impediment to walking down the colonnade there. And this will open it up to a greater degree, um, take it out of the eighties, nineties or two thousands, whatever that era was that those went up. I don't know. So it gives it a little more friendly, uh, rustic version to it, even though the, yeah, wood helps, uh, create nicer environment. So I think everything you've done is, is a good study. You've broken the application into recognizable elements and easy to address. I, it's a good application. It's going to be good to implement from your standpoint. And to Jim's point about the tenants, um, I had asked about the timeline for this. And having a less disturbed mall is really important to get this done quickly. So having a good package that they look at and approve and you guys get in there and do it. That Center Court went on forever and it was not a pretty sight, but, um, and, uh, it was, weather was responsible for that a large part, as I recall it behind. But this has got to be done quickly. It's a, it's a town concern. It's a revenue concern for the town and for you guys. To get it done quickly. So enough said, but I would like you to, uh, take, uh, notice of Margaret's comments and talk about the color. Um, I'm not sure where the blue comes from. But, um, she also talked about creating the more spaces for kids and so forth. I hear you talking about adding restaurants, if that's possible, that will create parklets down the road. If that comes into play. You guys have your own leasing strategy, so that's not our business. But, um, if you could respond to a couple of comments, please.
So I'm going to let Lewis.
So I'm going to let Lewis answer the majority of those comments, but just real quick on timing, because I know you mentioned it. So we're going to be starting. In April, so we're, you know, we have a crystal ball when the rainy season is going to end. We're basically saying April 1st, so we're. Out getting bids right now for the work and. We're going to have this work done by the end of September. So, you know, for us, the critical period for. Obviously I've already mentioned it tonight is November, essentially November 15th. Through the Christmas holidays. So, you know, we are on a very tight schedule to get this done. You know, we'll obviously be in close contact with the town. And building officials, but the way that we're going to do this is we're going to phase the work throughout the center. So. You'll have construction barriers up in one spot and then they'll come down and then you have one spot and then they'll come down. And so, you know, we've. You know, not to, not to kind of toot our own horn, but we're very good at doing this throughout our centers and I. Had a comment for Tracy earlier and I saw it in the, in the conditions of approval, but we are going to have to do, just letting everyone know, we are going to have to do some work. After business hours, so we will be making that application to the town. Because again, it's critically important that we're able to not impact our customers. You know, experience at the center.
Yeah, that's good. Okay.
I'll let Lewis answer all the other questions.
Thank you, guys. There's a lot to address there. I'll start with the color first because I think that's low hanging fruit. The intent was with the whole project. Was to bring warmth into the site, right? If you've gone to the center now, it is a vast amount of hardscape. It's all a concrete paver. And a bluestone, which is little patches throughout. And really the intent with the sandblasting, and if you see the mockups, there was actually three columns. We took one down, which wasn't even an option. The farther one that is a larger column is more of a paint. It's a darker brown. The chocolate color that we're talking about. Is actually a stain. It's meant to enhance the cedar. So as part of implementing all this greenage. The raw wood was the intent to bring that warmth. So that's why we're sandblasting all the gray off to get rid of that. Kind of coldness that we have now between the gray and the stone and the, and the white concrete. And having that warmth wood and the vines growing up the side. And then all the greenage around. So it's actually a clear stain. So it's really just a stain on top of cedar. So it's really not a brown color. And that can be seen in the mockup with the two columns. And the, and the two columns were picked too, and I'll just touch on this. We have that because it goes along your statement about opening them up. That's what's really under there. We're just swapping out and then we don't have to touch the any, we don't have to do any structural work. Which is more just more metal brackets and codes or anything. So we can just swap those out and make it look clean. Before I move on, is that? I don't want to like jump to the next topic. The next one, I think that was a big topic between multiple. That came up multiple times is the berms. Now the intent with the berms, there's two, there's two. Intentions and is it possible to put the plan up with the blue squiggles, like the circulation plan? How do we break up? This large amount of, of hardscape. Add warmth to the center and keep your sightlines. So when you look at this drawing, there's two sets of lines. There's the large, the thick blue lines. And then there's the dash lines. So we don't really have moments that you can't go across. And we don't really have moments where sightlines. I mean, two feet is this far and the roughage is this far. On roughage, just plants is a main term, but as you can see, you can crisscross. That was our intent is that at any point you can get across the two. We're not changing any of the hardscape where the large blue lines are. We're not, that's not part of our scope that is existing that goes in front of all the tenants and that's going to stay exactly what it is. We're just touching the inside. The whole inside section. Now what that does with the berms is. It creates these zones of privates, right? If you, if you sit in a chair now in the center and you have people walking by, people are walking all around you. Whereas now we've created these cuppy holes. There's intimacy. I can sit there and I can have a coffee and people can walk around. They're behind the berm, which I still have sightlines because it's not past my waist. And then I can sit in that chair and I don't have that interaction behind me. I can have a little privacy. And then I have all the water fountains throughout. So every water fixture is in one of these areas. Now, we don't really have a play fixture area, but those are those interactive areas and we utilize those. If you've noticed them, the frog and they think they're all polished on certain areas. So everybody's always touching them. Well, we're probably not touching them. That's the kids. That's at their level. So that's that experiential area that we tried to really keep hold of in these zones of intimacy and zones of. Of seating areas. So that really was the intent so that you can still not, we don't want to cut down visibility. You know, the trees are above us and the hedges are at our waist. Or not hedges, but the grasses. So that was really the design intent before is to, to create an area that you can meander through. And have all different types. I can sit in the, in the center court where it's wide open. I can sit by the fire pit. Or I can go in one of the areas that are a little more intimate with, you know, grasses and everything around. So that was the intent with the design. And then also the berms. So we're not taking out any drainage. Currently. The drainage is up to par for all the hardscape. We are removing pavers. We have enlarged existing planters. And we have created, as you can tell, tons of new planters. So the intent is, is that. We are now bringing more impervious. Area, more area for that water to go. And we already have all the existing drainage structure in place as well. So we won't ever have an overload. Actually, we'll have, I feel a surplus from what we're understanding from the engineers is because now we've opened up so much more area. That instead of a sheet flow, right? And now it goes into all the planters as well.
You don't think they're going to be draining down into, into the hardscape because it's a mound? I mean, if we get a hard rain, it's going to.
Well.
Won't retain.
Yeah, it doesn't, in the details, it doesn't go up to the top, right? I mean, you always are going to have that quick runoff before it's, it's absorbed. So the, the soil right now in the details is showing that it's going to the bottom of the pavers. Right? So you always have that buildup there. And then you have the absorption rates and anything that does flow over will still go to the drains as a backup. Right? Because the back, the drains are currently set to. Drain that whole area. That was, I mean, that's from our civil engineer.
Okay.
And then I think. That's it. Did I miss anything? I have a lot of notes here. Sorry.
No, I think that you've answered some basic questions there and thoughts that commissioners had. I, I did have one thought and it's escaped my mind at the moment, but thank you. For that. I think that. It sounds to me like this is still going to see some revisions before it goes to building. Is that what I'm hearing? But the layout won't change. What we're considering won't change in terms of berms and coverage and planting, all that. Will stay the same. Oh, I know what it was. It was about bicycles. About speed bikes. They're supposed to walk in the mall. They're not supposed to ride in the mall, right? Are there, they're, they're not signs up to say walk your bikes, are there? No. I've never seen an electric bike or a bike in either mall. But the, the good bike riders walk their bikes. But, you know, what do you do about those kids? I don't know. So. Yeah, there's, and then there's the stick in the spoke. Never mind. So, all right. Thank you. So now that we've ad libbed and gone on at length here, are there any more people putting their hands up for public comment? Okay. Be sure. All right. So we're at the point where we need to see if we've got consensus for a motion to approve this application. Is there someone who wants to make that motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve on the matter of design review and precise plan amendment application PL two four dash zero zero six eight. For the landscaping improvements throughout the central pedestrian areas of the village shopping center. At sixteen eighteen Redwood Highway, including. New planting areas, exterior lighting, seating areas and modifications to the existing covered canopy.
All right, we have a second, so we'll take a vote.
Commissioner Bendel?
Yes.
Commissioner Busher?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
And Chair Chase?
Yes.
So. Nothing to read about this. There's no appeal period, right?
Any decision of the planning commission may be appealed. The town council. Deal is $300 and. You must file it within 10 calendar days of the date of the decision and appeal forms are available on our website or at Town Hall at three hundred Tampa Drive.
That constitutes notice to the public. All right. And when you have a project, all right. So that's great. All right. So with that said, we'll move on from this item. And we'll go on to other business. So it's been so long since we had a meeting. I can't remember. Do any commissioners have anything to report?
Someone left their water.
I don't have the listing of commissioner attendance to town council, so I don't know who did what, when. But. Perhaps staff can tell us about anything. I think we may have had the last meeting of the year or was it council at the end of the year?
The end, they canceled one.
I think there was a council meeting after. Planning commission, yeah.
Nothing to really talk about then.
Well, there was an ADU ordinance that was adopted.
Yeah.
Can't remember what else was on that agenda. I'm going to have to keep the addendas. Up while we talk about this in the future.
There was a council meeting I attended. I don't remember the date and don't have notes, but. The two items that took 90% of the time was that all towns audit and the audit of the sewer authority. So it was. A, a long meeting, but not thrilling. But the audits all came out fine and were approved.
Yeah, this is the case always, right? So. But that was when? I don't remember when that was. All right, we've lost our memories. That's okay.
Tracy actually just pulled it up. So December 17th was the last council meeting and. So that also included discussions around. An audit. Report. And then. Approval of the Chamber of Commerce budget. And then a review of the accomplishments from the 2024 work plan. And then some appointments to various. Committees and JPA boards.
Yeah, that was the reorg meeting, wasn't it?
I think this was the meeting after the reorg.
All right. So. Thank you for reporting for us. Now, do you guys have anything you want to tell us about?
Yeah, I do have a few things. First, I did send an email about. A upcoming training, League of Cities Planning Academy. It's, I think it's three days. It's a really great training. I've sent commissioners in past jobs that I've had and it's been really worthwhile and we've. I've sent staff as well, so it's a great opportunity in March. If anyone's available to attend, I know Commissioner Kenny. Replied and said he would like to join that training. So, and we have a training budget, so if you all want to go, we can pay for that and accommodations as well. And then. Related to email, there was an email sent this week that we will no longer be supporting. Town email addresses for our boards and commissions. So there was a survey sent in December and about whether you or not you wanted to keep it. And it didn't sound like anyone wanted to keep it or nobody replied to it. So. We are going to move forward and, and not have the email addresses anymore. So if you want to talk with me individually, if you have a concern, let me know. Otherwise we'll confirm your personal emails and move forward with communicating that way. So. Yes.
Are, so we're not going to be able, someone can't go on the town website and email us directly anymore?
We are going to be creating. An email on the website, so someone could email all of you at the same time in one group. So they may not be able to see your email personally, but they can email. The commissioners. If that makes sense. And then it will be up to you. If you want to. Use your personal email, you could also create and a different email that you would like to use just for your. Commission role. But I, we can talk through what would work best and give you suggestions on, on what to do.
Yeah, because there was something in there about. Your email being able to be audited or something if there was some town business.
So if we do receive a Public Records Act request, for instance, you would have to supply any town related. Emails as your role of, as commissioner.
You'd have to supply it from your private.
Yes, whatever email you're using as part of your role here.
Would someone be able to audit it, like go through your emails? Or is it just?
It's usually limited to any emails that have the pertinent information that someone's requesting.
All, they have to decide that you've been dishonest and they want to see all of your emails, but. They take you, they have to take you at your word that you've supplied all of the documentation.
So it is a change in policy and, you know, part of this is cybersecurity, but also just. A matter of how much the email addresses get used and whether they're valuable. And what, what we've heard collectively is that people would rather use their personal emails just to be able to keep track and. Be able to correspond. So we'll, we'll see how this goes, but again, happy to talk with you individually. If you would like to do something different or just would like some suggestions on how to separate. Your town related emails and personal. Is, I'm sure that can be of concern.
Amy, when would this take effect?
I think at the end of the month is when. Mike said that would take place. So if you check your email. Soon you'll see it in there from, I think he sent it this week or last. I can't, I think it was last week.
And just to clarify, so that you know what's the best course of action here, all of the town mass emails that currently are going to our town email addresses. That will be obsolete to us, right? Like we will not be receiving any longer. Anything that not concerning the commissioners' work. Is that correct?
You won't be able to access that account or receive emails to the cordermedera.gov accounts.
Right, but my question is like, you know, there are a lot of like cybersecurity training that reminders and all of these things that.
You will not get those anymore, unfortunately, but if you would like them, we can. Okay, and some other. Business updates. This year, a new law took place around ADUs where jurisdictions are required to accept. Pre. Or to, were required to accept applications for someone to have a pre-approved ADU plan. So the town is potentially going to collect. Various stock building plans that someone could come in and say, I want to build that. And that set of plans would be pre-plan checked. And so are we have an application process now to be able to accept. Applications for someone to use their plans as one of those options. And so we would have a, a plan check process that that application would go through. And then that would be on a website where an applicant in town would be able to choose that. That set of plans. That was not very clear. Does that make sense? Okay.
If that helps you guys, or helps people get ADUs underway, that's great.
It, it is a state law that we are open to accepting these applications and that we do plan check them and have them available to the public. There are areas of the state where they've already had programs like this, and they have been successful. So now it's an absolute requirement that jurisdictions enable the process. So hopefully, we will receive some, and hopefully it will be helpful and will increase the amount of ADUs in the community.
Amy, there would still be review of the sighting and engineering and things like that?
Not necessarily. So this would be just the structure itself. So all of those site-specific things would be handled as part of our normal building.
That's what I was asking. Yeah, thanks.
And our ADU ordinance that you all recommended to the council did go to the council. It was approved, and so that will be actually going into effect in a couple of days. And so thank you for your work on that, and we're excited to be compliant with state law. All right, and then just another update on our housing project at 240 Tamil Vista. It's 100% affordable multifamily project. That is moving forward, and so your next meeting will be a study session for that project. We are also having a community meeting, and that will be held on the 23rd to 22nd. And so that will be held here, and it will be hybrid. We do need to know if you all plan to attend that, because if we have a quorum, we will notice it appropriately, so you all can attend. So let us know as you can what your plans are, if you're going to be able to attend that.
What's the date again?
It's Wednesday, January 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And it'll be here at Town Hall, but also on Zoom. So if you're attending either way, we'd like to know. And we would just do a very quick notice, but we do have to do a public notice if there's more than three of you attending.
Six to eight on the 22nd? I'd like to attend if
I will not be.
I have a feeling I will.
I might attend online, and I have to figure out if I can have internet access or not. I'll have to let you know. If you don't hear from me, then I, I'm not going to be online, but.
Sounds like we might go ahead and notice it just so you have flexibility.
That'd be good. That'd be helpful.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. And the notices for that are in your email. Okay, that's, that's all that I have to report tonight.
With the transition away from town-issued email, then we won't get any more security. No before, that'll be off the table, no more security training.
Correct.
Oh, too bad. Okay.
Spam that comes through, is that going to be filtered before it gets to each one of our? You guys have a pretty robust spam that shows up in our emails. We get more spam than anything else. Like the, whatever.
Well, no, it won't be the
Yep, you won't, we will not have a town email address. So you'll have to deal with your spam filter on whatever platform you're using your email.
Yeah, but it's not importing the spam that we get.
Personally, you know.
If you've done your security training, then you know how to identify.
I know how to identify. I'm telling you.
I'm so ashamed.
Make sure.
Let's start with the security training. Finish, there is three more that come up.
The same one. I, I have another question relative to 240 Tamil Vista. What's the best way to get reminded of what, what elements we can review? What kind of input we can have, given, you know, the nature of the project?
We can, we can talk afterwards if you'd like, but I would suggest that you don't provide input as, as part of the community meeting, because it will be coming before you on your next meeting. So you'll have the ability to comment on the project at that point.
Yeah, the 28th.
Been noticed as, as well.
One more question. Has there been any activity at 400 Oakdale?
The, the two parties have met. They have not come to an agreement on, on, or the, the neighbor at 404 is still opposed to the project. 400 Oakdale has started exploring an SB9 project at the site, which is a ministerial process where they could subdivide the property into two and then develop up to two units on each lot, and that's a ministerial review process. So they are looking at, at other options for development.
Thank you. Okay. So, that's all from staff here for us, right? Okay. And you've said too much already. So I will say then that we've got two sets of minutes to talk about. Anybody have any changes to the minutes?
I do. On the minutes of January 14th. On the business items.
Which date, sorry? That's, that's the November, October?
November 12th. In the business items, there was a discussion of town work plan items for 2025. We discussed, and at least I brought it up, and I know Peter made a comment, about the, there was a talk about the time limits for projects to be completed by, from planning permitting to the finish of the project.
Can you add that, or is that, does the video record suffice as the minutes? She's writing.
We can add that to the minutes for your approval.
We want to bring it back.
You're asking to state that there is discussion of including in the work plan limits on construction. Limits on stating to add to the minutes of November 12th that there was discussion among the commissioners of including in the work plan time limits on construction projects.
Right.
Okay, enough.
I think your motion to approve these
Yeah, we'll make the motion go through.
That was
Nothing else from the other commissioners for the other minutes? All right, so we can vote with a unanimous voice here?
Aye.
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 That's right. Valerie, good point. Right, so the November 12th meeting minutes are only approvable by myself, Dan, and Margaret.
Right, and I found
Right, so we've amended those minutes, so the three of us can say aye.
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 Okay. And the other minutes for October 22nd are only approvable by Busher, Kenny, Rizzo, and myself. So, shall we say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. They're approved. With that said, good night.